Welcome, everybody, to tonight's regularly scheduled council meeting. Is there someone here? Do we have a pastor from Fairhope Avenue Baptist? There he is. Come on. If I can ask you all, please rise.
Please, he goes. State your name.
We double-booked on pastors? We probably need more than -- we can use more than one prayer.
Yeah.
We'll take more than one.
Come in unison.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask everybody to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance as well.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community. Grant us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we discuss matters that affect our city and its people. May our decisions reflect integrity, justice, and compassion. Bless this council, our citizens, and all who work for the common good. In your Son's precious name, Jesus our Savior, amen.
Yeah. It started as you would.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, all right. A pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, council. We have -- I'd like to add an item onto tonight's agenda. And as mentioned at the end of the work session, I'll just read this agenda item. And it says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope that the City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to write letters of support for MediaCom, Comcast, and C Spire for their subaward grant applications through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs," also known as ADECA, "for the Alabama BEAD." That's Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Grant Program. So if I can get a motion to amend the agenda to add this. This is item number 23.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. That's added to the agenda. Thank you. All right. Next item of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the work sessions which were held on April 29th. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes?
No, sir. I move that we accept the minutes as written. Council President.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Those minutes are approved as submitted. Mayor Sullivan, your reports, please.
Thank you. Councilman Burrell, I have several proclamations this -- tonight. So I actually have four. And I'm going to start with the National Tennis Month. So if you -- y'all would like to come up? Tomás? Y'all want to come up, please? No? Okay. So Tomás, obviously, is our Director of Tennis Services here in Fairhope out of the Mike Ford Tennis Center. So we did a picture earlier, but I'm going to present this proclamation to him. It says, "Whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. Whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads for the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play from beginners to professionals at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 700,000 members from every corner of the country. Whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through its USTA adaptive grants. Whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Fairhope of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month and encourages players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits. And to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their community. So now therefore I, Sherri Sullivan, Mayor of Fairhope, proclaim May 2025 as National Tennis Month and urge the citizens of Fairhope to become aware and support National Tennis Month." I think Mike Ford would be very happy with what's going on at the Mike Ford Tennis Center. We are under construction with two new tennis courts and 10 new pickleball courts, which will hopefully open this summer. And tennis continues to grow in our area. Racquet sports, especially pickleball and tennis in particular, have, you know, are so popular. The clay courts, we have a lot of people who use those with the leagues. And just really thankful for Tomás and his staff and what they do to promote tennis in our community. Thank you. Thank you very much. We also have some shy folks here from the U.S. -- from the FTA here. Mary, Eleonora, and Paul. Where was he? Paul had to scoot out. But yes, they were here too, also, to represent. So next, I'm also proclaiming it Mental Health Month in May. Is there anybody here recognizing Mental Health Month? Okay. So it says, "Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, whereas mental illness affects almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental health recover if given the necessary services and support in their communities. Whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and communities. Whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. Whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with somebody -- through personal contact with somebody with a mental illness. Whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, community schools, and businesses. Whereas greater public awareness about mental health can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. So now therefore I, Sherri Sullivan, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National -- as Mental Health Month in Fairhope. As Mayor of the City of Fairhope, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Fairhope to recommit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma, discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses." Thank you. Now, I know I have folks here with Safe Boating Week. Y'all want to come on up? And I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'm going to give them a few minutes to say something, introduce themselves. So it's National Safe Boating Week. And it says, "Whereas National Safe Boating Week is May 17th through the 23rd, and boating safety partners across the United States and Canada are teaming up to promote safe and responsible boating, including voluntary wear of life jackets. And whereas life jacket wear is the number-one precaution a boater can take to stay safe on the water, and drowning remains the primary cause of death in recreational boating accidents. And whereas the Fairhope Flotilla Chapter of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is dedicated to improving the knowledge, skills, and abilities of recreational boaters in order to reduce deaths and injuries. And now therefore I, in an effort to raise public awareness of these important issues, Sherri Sullivan, as the Mayor of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd as National Safe Boating Week, encourage all of our citizens to join with the Fairhope United States Coast Guard Flotilla Chapter and take advantage of boater education information offered to further enhance safe and enjoyable boating on our nation's waters." Introduce yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Killian. My associate is Brian McGrew. We're part of the Eastern Shore Flotilla here in Fairhope. In 1936, the Coast Guard had over 14,000 requests for assistance that year due to the advent of single-operator boats and outboard engines. And of those 14,000, 8,600 of them were for lives in peril. So the Coast Guard created the auxiliary, which acted as the reserves at that time, to help with recreational boat safety. We do it every year in May because, as the mayor mentioned, almost 80% of the people who die in boating accidents are not wearing life jackets. So we highly recommend, get one that fits you and get one that looks the coolest so you'll always want to wear it before you go boating.
Coolest.
Here in our metropolitan area, we have three stations. We have the Aviation Training Center at the airport in West Mobile where all Coast Guard aviators go through for training. We have Sector Mobile where we have force cutters there. And we have Station Dolphin Island, which is our principal search-and-rescue station for the Gulf of America area here with three fast boats. Brian, you want to say anything?
Sure. I just want to thank y'all for putting the spotlight on this week coming up. And just here's to a safe summer. And everybody, get out there and have fun and make it back home safe.
Absolutely.
God bless.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? You know, from time to time, I believe the Coast Guard Auxiliary has offered a day when people can bring their boats and get it inspected. And I think you give them a sticker if they're Coast Guard-approved, or I may not be using the correct terminology for it. So is there a particular day? Do you guys have anything planned for that on Eastern Shore or elsewhere in the area?
We don't have anything planned special right now, but we have done it in various areas in the area. Well, also, come to your home or where you have the boat stored at your convenience and do an inspection of your boat to make sure that it's safe and meets all of the federal and state regulations. There's no charge for it, and it's simply to make you a better mariner. And you do get a sticker, which is good for each calendar year.
Very good. Thank you. I have a question, Council President. Are you guys on this side at all at any time? I heard three locations, but this was not -- Dolphin Island was the closest. Are you on this side at our pier at all at any time? Do y'all rotate through this area at our marina?
We do patrol this area, but not specifically Fairhope Pier or what have you unless we get a call from someone.
Got you. What about fire?
Boat fires?
Yes, yes.
Yes. We certainly will respond, as will the local fire departments.
Now, do we have -- we have a boat with you guys here, don't we, for fire?
We have a fire boat at our marina.
At our marina. That's what you guys would use. Okay. I'm just trying to -- yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your support. All right. Very good. Thanks, Mayor. You betcha.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. So -- and I'm going to say this with these folks in the room. I think we've saved the best to last. So it's National Police Week, so we, of course, want to recognize our, you know, Fairhope's finest today. That's right. Give them a round of applause.
That's right. Always. My dogs.
So thankful, of course, for our police and the things they do in our community to keep us safe and to keep our community safe. But again, we are recognizing this as National Police Week. It says, "Whereas in 1962, a presidential proclamation was signed designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the weekend at which it falls is National Police Week. Whereas the members of the Fairhope Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Fairhope. And whereas it is important for all citizens to understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Whereas the Police Department of Fairhope has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which increasingly provides a vital public service. And now therefore I, Sherri Sullivan, Mayor of Fairhope, do formally recognize the members of the Fairhope Police Department for their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities and dedication to our community. Accordingly declaring May 11th through 17th as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Further, the City of Fairhope wishes to honor all police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty." Thank you. Chief, who's up?
I just want to thank y'all for recognizing all of the men and women of our department this week. Thank you.
Chief, good job.
Not only do they provide safety, but they are -- this month in particular, there has been so many events, and you see them at every one of them with a smile on their face, knowing that they have the extra duties of taking care of safeguarding our community, spending time with their own families. And so they always go above and beyond. And I get so many accolades for the police department and the service they provide. And just really want to thank them and recognize them this week. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Really mean it. Thank you so much.
I'm going this way.
Are you through, Mayor? Any more proclamations?
I have no proclamations.
Yes, ma'am. Take your time. All right. We're going to move on with the agenda. Our next item is public participation for agenda items only. If you would like to address the council on items five through 23, five through 23, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, we'll give Okay. Anyone for public participation for agenda items? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close public participation on agenda items. And I will remind everyone that we'll have another public participation session following tonight's agenda. That would be item 24, where you could bring anything else before the council. Okay. Counsel comments. Councilman Martin?
No, I don't have anything. I guess the kids are about to be out for the summer, so about to see a lot of changes as far as kids running around town, which I always love. But just remember, y'all, stay safe in the summer. Have a good time. But that's all I have. Stay cool.
Counsel McConner?
No comments, sir.
Okay. Counselman Boone?
Well, I'd like to welcome Brother Richard Johnson back to the meeting groups now that he's gotten over all his little issues. Glad to have him back and part of the city again. Thank you very much for your service.
Okay. Now --
I got one more thing, Council President.
Yes, sir.
You know, I failed to mention, you know, Esquire and myself, we had some kids that went up to the final four at the Fairhope Varsity. So kind of want to give those boys a hand. They played their hearts out and didn't quite get over the hump, but it was a very good experience for them, and we were very proud of them representing Fairhope. So I'll just give a shout-out to them. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. I don't have any comments tonight, so I'll close counsel comments, and we'll move to item five. Item five is a final adoption of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1253. Public hearing. It says public hearing. It's not a public hearing, is it, Lisa?
No, it's not.
All right. All right. Let's see. This is a request of the applicant, S.C. Civil, on behalf of the owners, Robert and Renee Taylor, an FST Blue Island Owners Association, to amend the planned unit development known at Hermitage Court. The property is approximately 0.36 acres and located at 620 Hermitage Court. And this was introduced at the last council meeting on April 29th. Hunter, I think this one's probably one of the easier ones we've done, but I'll let you review that.
Extremely easy. No net gain of any homes, buildings, square footage of any building, no developments. This is essentially adding some land to a lot because it is PED zoning. It requires a zoning map amendment to do that. And basically, we have the before on the left-hand side of the screen, and on the right is the net effect. So Lot 7 becomes bigger. Doesn't add any more houses or anything other than that. Flip through kind of the end results. It's a common lot line move is the result. Nothing changing from the density, the drainage easements, anything along those lines. We did recommend approval of this. Planning Commission also concurred with that thought and comes to unanimously recommending approval. There is one condition we do recommend because the replat -- there was a single -- it was one of the lots was single-tax. A portion was not. So a replat is needed to move the lot line. We did receive that final. It's ready to go. So as soon as we get through with here, that would be recorded if you so recommend -- or approve this. And before advertisement, ask the city clerk to not send the advertisement out until we get that slide number. But other than that, we do recommend approval. If there's any questions, I can answer those. Aaron Collins is here on behalf of S.C. Civil.
Any questions, council? I would ask if you do make a motion for final adoption that you say pending the one condition.
I move for final adoption with the addition of the one recommendation condition.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council.
Don't worry about it. Off-guard.
Item number six is final adoption of an ordinance to declare the certain real property of the City of Fairhope, which is part of the K-1 Center located at 106 South Church Street for Baldwin County Community and Economic Development Foundation, as outlined in Exhibit A, is attached to the lease, is not needed for public or municipal purposes in response to an offer to lease the property for a 15-year term for the minimum yearly rent of $1 payable as specified in the lease. This was introduced at the previous city council meeting on April 29th. I do want to point out that we did receive, and in item seven, we will be voting to expend some of this money. We did receive, by partnering with the Baldwin County Community and Economic Development Foundation, $3.5 million worth of grant money to run a vague debt. And if you wanted to look at what that return on investment is over the term of that lease, a 15-year term, that's $233,000 per year return. I look at it kind of like that. When you see the dollar, you think you're giving it away. But actually, without their assistance, we wouldn't have had that $3.5 million. So does anybody have any questions about that? This has been going on for several years now.
I'm just happy to, Council President, see this moving forward. You know, it's been a long time waiting. It's such a monumental facility or area in our community. So it's good to see it about to get back on its feet again.
I agree with that and move for final adoption.
We have a motion for final adoption. Do we have a second? We have a second?
Yes, sir. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. And speaking of that, item seven is a resolution to award a bid to Rogers &amp; Willett Incorporated for the K-1 Center redevelopment with a bid proposal not to exceed $6,555,79. This was -- this did exceed the budget, but we felt good about, you know, the bids. We had several, and they were all, you know, they were in family. So I guess it's -- it is what it is. And at least $3.5 million of it's covered by grants, so.
Make a motion. Will you approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will say we did discuss this at length in the work session tonight earlier. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item eight is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute the Second Amendment to the lease agreement as presented between the City of Fairhope and the University of South Alabama, a post-secondary institution under the control of the University of South Alabama Board of Trustees for the leased area of 16,000 square foot at 161 North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama, which would be the area that's part of this building to our west. I do know that, and the mayor did, I believe we did, asked for, and they agreed to a 10%. It's been, I think we had leased it more recently for five years, and we did raise that rent by 10%, which we thought was fair for an educational institution. So, if there were any questions about that.
My question would be, I know we don't have anything immediately pending related to any kind of renovation of this building, but that is something foreseeable in the future at some point. And I just want to know if there's a time exit if we were to say, hey, we need to go ahead and we want to start a project here. Is there an opportunity to get out? How long is this lease?
Three years.
Three years? Okay.
And I do see that on the Second Amendment to the lease is indicative of the 10% increase too. Yeah, I think that we went to the five-year just in anticipation of possibly doing something and we're kind of going to shorter terms. They're cognizant. They've been told that there's always a possibility that something would be done with this facility.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I've read this several times over the years, but there is some language in there that both parties can agreeably back out if something happens. And then we did that on purpose.
That's a pretty long lease. I can't do it that quick right now. I'm trying to find it. Here we go. Can terminate this lease at the end of any fiscal year.
There you go.
That's if they fail to get funding. Yeah, we can give them a proper notice.
They're three years. I just want to make sure it wasn't a 10 or 15-year.
Right. Yeah. No, it's a good question.
You know, it came up the last time when we was discussing who was moving in and out, and we kind of made sure that we had those type of tools, those type of decisions.
It's actually under item 11 of the lease. Can be renewed for one additional year with at least 90-day written notice if we want to go beyond that.
At this point, even if we wanted to go under design, I think the window is --
It's good. Right. That's right.
Three years is good.
That's right. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion to authorize the execution of this?
No move.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a change order number one for the Stacks Gully Slope Stabilization Project with a cost not to exceed $17,940 and to award change number one to Thomas H. Davis III Construction Company. The new contract total would be a not to exceed $204,823 and authorizes the C Treasury to transfer the $17,940 from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. I think Richard covered this at length in the work session. We talked about some other Stacks Gully issues that's going on, not related to this. This seems to have actually held up well.
Make a motion. Will you approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 10 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the award of the request of quotes for labor. Did I miss anything? Okay, good. Award of the request for quotes for labor materials for the rehabilitation of damaged and irreparable docks at the Fairhope Docks Marina to Levitt Land LLC for not to exceed project cost of $70,000. This is a public works project that's less than $100,000 and therefore does not need to be formally bid out. to be formally bid out. I think Mr. White told us in the work session, there were 11 slips that were unusable, and this would render them usable. This is a budgeted item, and there will be actually more work than just the 11 slips done. So I'm glad to see us incrementally repairing that and getting that in order, because it'll pay quick dividends.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the request for quotes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 11 is a resolution to award the bid to Shade America to provide and install 16 T-HIP Canty shade structures at Volanta Sports Park with a bid proposal not to exceed $137,600. There will be city-provided materials necessary to complete the project estimated at $10,000. This is going to cover all the youth fields at Volanta, other than the high school or the Dixie Boys Field, and it did come in under budget. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, a long time coming. A lot of sun tanning. So it's a help a lot, man. It's a help, for sure.
Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution that the City Council approves a contract amendment number one for bid number 2500-008 for pest control annual contract with Wayne's Pest Control Services with an additional not to exceed amount of $2,939.20 and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the contract amendment. The new contract total with a not to exceed annual amount will be $13,469.68.
Make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution to award the bid for the 46 KV transmission line project. Base bid and alternate two materials to Gresko Utility Supply for $625,840.35 plus a $20,000 contingency, also to Tri-State Utility Products for $28,877.10 plus a $2,000 contingency, and Wesco International for $105,627.91 plus a $20,000 contingency. Total award to the three vendors with contingency will be $802,345.36. I want to ask you, yes, was this one of the ones that we need to talk about?
Yes, sir. This one and the next one. It's fine the way it is, I just want to clarify one thing and add two sentences. Contingency allowances are based on quantity increases and not scope of work or price increases. Any price increase or change in the scope of work in excess of 10% of the bid amount shall be subject to additional bid requirements. And I talked to Ben during the break, and this is what he's got in there. The contingencies are fine, and as his, what he told me is, I've got so many nuts, bolts, widgets that I've got to buy, and it may run over that. That's what the contingency is for, and that's perfectly fine, but you can't do price or scope of work that's in excess of that 10% without going back out to bid. So that sentence or those two sentences will clarify that, and I'd recommend going ahead and approving that.
So what would be those two sentences we would add to the resolution? Can you be specific on this?
Add the 13th and add the 14th.
What is it? You want to give the language for the record?
Yes. Contingency allowances are based on quantity increases and not scope of work or price increases. Any price increase or change in the scope of work in excess of 10% of the bid amount shall be subject to additional bid requirements.
Do we need to bid on the amending that resolution? Do we need to vote on that, Lisa? Or do you just want to make a motion for the amended resolution?
That would work.
Yeah, somebody would make a motion for the amended resolution as stated.
Make a motion. Will you approve the amended resolution?
Okay. We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the amended resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, and then I'll read 14, and then I may get you to read that one more time. Okay, item 14 is a resolution to award a bid for the 46 KV transmission line project. Alternate one materials to Gresko Utility Supply for $344,101.4 plus a $20,000 contingency to Tri-State Utility Products for $3,925.40 and Wesco International for $86,421.58 plus a $20,000 contingency. Total award to the three vendors with contingency will be $474,448.02. Now, Marcus, I noticed that the first contingency on the 344 does not exceed 10%. The second one does not have a contingency, but the third one has a contingency which exceeds 10%?
It's a 23%, and those are quantity increases.
Okay, see, that's...
That's why we added this.
This sentence.
Yeah.
If you have telephone calls, and you need, you know, 15 versus 12, and that runs over, then runs over the 20%, you still bid on the underlying widget telephone.
Basically, per price.
Same, yeah.
Okay.
So you're not running foul of bid law. But your price increase or the total scope of work increases where you have to go over that 10%. That's what the problem is.
Yeah.
And I'll be glad to reread.
Yeah, I got, yeah, just add those two sentences again for the record on 14.
Two sentences to add. Contingency allowances are based on quantity increases and not scope of work or price increases. Any price increase or change in the scope of work in excess of 10% of the bid amount shall be subject to additional bid requirements.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the amended resolution?
So moved. Make a motion to approve the amended resolution as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, any further discussion? Thanks for catching that, Marcus. Appreciate that. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. All right, item 15 is a resolution to award the bid to GMC Underground for Fairhope Cast Iron Replacement Phase Two with a bid proposal not to exceed $4,107,412. This was a lot of money. I think if you take page two of tonight's agenda, this, you might want to frame it, because this might be more money than you'll ever spend in your life in one day. A lot on here. This is not a surprise. This has been planned for quite a long time, and Wes has gone through it in detail in the work session, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I just, I'm a little bit sensitive to the fact that if it looks like we flippantly passed $4.1 million, but we didn't have a lot of discussion, it's something that's not unexpected at all.
I'd also like to add that this is a federal mandate that we replace all this cast iron.
Exactly.
And we've talked, even though we may be voting specifically on the 4.1, we've talked about this particular project for, I think, the whole time I've been on the council.
It was talked about when I was first elected to council. And, you know, and it was, it's been mandated, and we had, how long, Wes, how many years? 20 years or something?
24.
24 years.
Yeah, 24.
We just waited for the price to go up.
Forty.
Yeah.
But it does seem like we don't even blink when we vote on that, but I think it's because we've been talking about it for eight years.
Yes, you know, and I think...
That, the fact you have to do it. It's a question. Whether we want to do it, you got to do it.
Part of the infrastructure act.
You got to do it by a certain date.
That's right. Yeah, we've got to, we've got to move on with it. So anyway, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor to award the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution. The City Council approves amendment number three for natural gas engineering consulting services with Magnolia River Services Incorporated for cast iron pipe replacement phase one for additional inspection service with a not to exceed amount of $175,832.35 and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute the contract amendment. The contract price will not exceed $1,890,598.85. This was given a lot of attention in the work session. I will caution the council that we only have four people here right now. Reading the tea leaves, I think that it, I'm not sure that this will pass, so I don't know if we want to have a little discussion, but let me just ask for a motion and a second first.
I approve the motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion. We approve.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
May I, counsel president?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, you know, I think, you know, this came across the desk, and when I first read it, I really didn't understand it, and I, but I knew something was off with it, and I appreciate the fact that this particular entity came to the table, but I would have rather them come to the table and actually, in my opinion, do the right thing or something business-wise dealing with funds in this situation, seemingly that as they do their due diligence or they look back, they can see some wrongs in their ways. Not that it was nefarious or any malicious involved. It was just out of order, in my opinion. And I just don't think that it's a precedent that we should set, whether it was a mistake or not, moving forward with business, being good stewards of the people's money. I just, I just don't take that lightly, and I would hope that that particular company would not take it lightly either. So, you know, I'm not really in favor of doing anything in the positive light towards this funding this particular situation, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of it, and I agree with some of the things. The way it's maybe gone hasn't been, hasn't been the best, but I guess the questions I would ask, Mayor and Wes, y'all have sat down with the, um, Mayor and Wes, y'all sat down with the company. You've kind of talked through the expectations. My question would be, do we anticipate that they will be the...
Perfect timing.
The consultant in doing the inspection on the remaining phases of this installation two?
I think what Wes and I have discussed is, they have been included in on the inspections for phase two because they've been part of that process. But for phase three, there are other companies who do and do inspection, and we will bid that out. We will bid it again.
That's our, yeah, the mayor's correct. You know, at phase three, we felt like we needed to kind of assess the situation. It's a big project. It's multi-year, pretty multifaceted, kind of encompasses a large majority of downtown and the fruit and nut, and goes all the way to North Avenue. And so, yeah, that was a kind of our midpoint to look at everything and kind of see what we learned, what we felt like we did right, what we did wrong, and then assess going forward. But they are 100% a part of phase two, but there's nothing in any type of contractual agreement that they will be, you know, three through six.
And I'm almost looking at it maybe the opposite way of how you're thinking I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it more of the, hey, if we think this is somebody that might be a long-term partner, and we may have gotten off on the wrong foot, is there an opportunity here to prove themselves?
Sure.
Right, and say, hey, okay, we maybe didn't get off the way we should.
Yeah, and I don't want this to look like a mark on their company.
And I feel like we have a little bit of ownership in this, is what I'm hearing also from y'all.
That's correct. And the other thing is, I mean, they are very clear on the fact that there will be no change order in phase two. If you come to me with a change order, we're really going to have a problem. And I think I made that abundantly clear in our meeting.
You did.
Yes. So, I mean, I think that they will, I think they will definitely prove themselves in the second phase.
Thank you.
I think they exceeded the contract that said not to exceed by $175,000. I hate it for them. I'm not doubting they did the work, although if you, I had to sharpen my pencil pretty sharp to make the math work. You know, they said it went over by 90 days, and, you know, I didn't look at every hour, but if I just kind of took a rough estimate of their hourly charge and how many people that I estimated, somewhat educated guess through conversations with the mayor, you know, they, it was kind of pushing it to come up with 90 days. You said, I don't know if they worked seven days a week.
And I looked at every hour. I literally looked at every hour.
Did they work seven days a week on the 90 days? Because it came out to about 93 days for two people.
I, I...
And I was wondering if they worked Saturday or Sunday, too.
I can't quote the days, but I looked at every hour, and I compared it to work through the construction contract and through our project manager, but we scrutinized it down to the hour.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. I am.
We definitely audited the bill.
You know, part of me, I don't want to not pay someone for the work that they did. We don't want to do that. But at the same time, I don't know when it stops. And if we just continue to let people overcharge and not hold them accountable, then, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you stop it except to say, stop it. Any other discussion?
Are you up? My problem is, I understand there's some mistakes made on both sides, and I understand it's an issue, but I also think that the issues have been corrected, and the fact that they did work the hours and we do owe them for that work is, I think we're going to have to pay them. We're not going to like it. I don't like it, but unfortunately, as long as we correct the issue so that this doesn't happen again, I don't think we're going to have this problem again. But if we owe them the money, we got to pay them.
My question is, do we owe them money or not? If it's a not to exceed, and you exceed it?
Well, they did the work. It's my point. Accounted for the excess. That's, you know, I can probably argue both sides pretty well.
You can argue both sides, yeah.
Yeah, that's just, that's my opinion.
I mean, I feel the same way. I kind of argued on both sides in my head, too. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the cost, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Is that 3-2? 3-2. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution to award the bid to Hemp Hill Construction for forced main upgrades with a bid proposal not to exceed $6,489,900 and authorizes City Treasurer to transfer $2,739,900 from, you can read that line 50, projected to cover the expense overage. This was also talked about at length in the work session. As the mayor pointed out, we had approximately $13 million worth of grant money from the Restore project that we, our Restore program, and this kind of ties into all of those upgrades. So we're getting about $19 million worth of upgrades for, you know, roughly $13 million. I didn't really understand that comment until I realized that it kind of makes the whole project whole, and it's all encompassing, and it's going to make a huge difference in what we do. So, anyway, it was more than we had expected, but the bids were pretty close, as Darrell pointed out. You know, whenever you have that, those bids, they come in in the same family, you feel like it's a, you know, it's a good bid, and we did. We had three bids, and they were all in family, and this was the lowest one. So I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to award the bid. Any further discussion? I also wanted to mention that it's set to hopefully be completed by the end of the year, end of this calendar year, which I thought was really good, too. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the installation of an 8-inch water main at Portico Simpson to WR Mitchell Contractor for not to exceed project cost of $61,370. It's a public works project, less than $100,000, and therefore does not need to be formally bid out. Mayor Sullivan will address this, please.
I was feeling weird just sitting down and talking. This is actually something that started back in 2018. It was an 8-inch water main that's actually a fire line that the city had committed to putting in back in 2018. Unfortunately, we did not do that work at that time. We did have a resolution that talked about doing the work, and at that time, we estimated the work to be at about $21,000. Unfortunately, here we are, you know, seven years later, and the work has increased to $61,000. That's why we're back before you today, because obviously, at this given point in time, it is a non-budgeted item, and, you know, we have consulted legal. I do think there's some legal grounds that we have because of the time, the time constraints on that resolution, that we don't necessarily have to do the work. I obviously wasn't here at that time, but I do feel when the city gives a word about doing some work that we should honor that and would like to do that if possible. The other thing is, right now, we have the adequate fire flow in place to be able to service everybody in that area, but once this phase of this project comes online, we will need that 8-inch line for the amount of fire flow that we need to protect that area. So that's why I feel like this is really important. Again, it's another something that you could probably argue both sides of this, but again, at the end of the day, we did have a resolution saying that we would do this work, and I just feel like the city should honor its work. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of a request for quotes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. I, when I read the resolution, I felt like we were on the hook, and, you know, if we didn't want to be on the hook for this amount, then we should put a not to exceed or put a sunset clause in there that if it's not undertaken by such an amount of time, that's um, it, that's how I read the resolution. And I, I felt like that, that we had an obligation, a legal obligation to, um, follow that. I realize that there, you know, it could be interpreted different ways, but that was, that was the way I read it. When I, when I read the resolution multiple times, it was, in my opinion, I thought that we were on the hook for it.
And, and I think that was part of, when I went back and finally had a chance to try to look at it, um, best I could. Um, I think they meant to put it in the ground then. That's why there was not a not to exceed or a sunset clause. So, that makes me think that, um, you know, we should follow through what we wrote. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Uh, I think there was s- some language in there, like the mayor said, that does give us at least a legal, a, a little bit of legal flexibility. But, but in the end, it was, it was our intent to do it at the time, for sure. Um, and when you, when you, I feel like if you have to get that technical to try to get out of it, the odds are you probably should do it. And so, I think that's, that's where I am.
I gotta admit, I was against this in the fact that I also see the twenty-one thousand dollars that we all approved at that time, and I've jumped up three times. But unfortunately for me, I think y'all are all right. Like, it was an argument I could do both sides. So, let's go with it.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, we had the motion, you, and you said you're in favor, you're in favor, I'm in favor. So, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item nineteen is a resolution. The mayor and city treasurer hereby authorize and direct to dispose of the personal property owned by the city of Fairhope, Alabama, which is approximately four hundred scrap brass water meters by the following method: Sold for scrap or recycle at the highest offered value. Darryl covered this, um, I believe, in the work session. And so, um, I guess we don't have any use for them, right? Old antiquated? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize and direct them to dispose of.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty is a resolution. The city of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the maintenance and cleaning of the main irrigation well for Quail Creek Golf Course to Griner Drilling Service for a not to exceed cost of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents, and authorizes the city treasurer to transfer twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents from the golf grounds, capital improvements to the golf grounds, general maintenance. Um, most of this were, is for the, uh, installation or reinstallation of, of the pump. They, uh, Griner's going to warranty the pl- the pump. Uh, they will clean the pipes. And, uh, Pat pointed out that it's probably something we're gonna need to budget every three to five years. We do have, uh, nine or ten new golf greens going in. It would not be a good time to not have irrigation. So, uh, I think this is a must. It's an unbudgeted, um, but, um, it's, it's pretty much a must-have. So, I'll entertain a motion. Okay?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the award. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, 'cause a lot of times when we say it's unbudgeted, it's unbudgeted due to a reason. And the fact that nobody participates in the process. Budget. You go out, we have to figure out ways to. Shaft or well.
Pump, the well.
That deal would break. And unfortunately, it does. And we gotta fix it to keep the city going. So, you know, a little different than saying it's unbudgeted, 'cause there's a reason for it.
Did we call the question, clerk? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please say nay. All right. Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Item twenty-one is a resolution to award the bid for the procurement of two new twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado fifteen-hundred, uh, PPV four-wheel-drive crew cabs for the police department to Donahue Chevrolet for a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. I will say that one is budgeted and, uh, one will be paid for, uh, with the federal grant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-two is a resolution. The mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Pyro Productions for a professional consultant for the design and production of a fireworks display for the Fourth of July event, twenty-twenty-five, with a not-to-exceed amount of forty thousand dollars pursuant to the Code of Alabama Pyrotechnic Shooter Law. Was it budgeted? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Okay. Item twenty-three was added to the agenda. Councilman Robinson. Um, this is, I'll just read it. It's very short. It says, "The city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to write letters of support for MediaCom, Comcast, and C-Spire for their subaward grant applications through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, also ADECA, for the Alabama BEAD or Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Grant Program." entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please say nay. All right. Motion carries. All right. Last item on tonight's agenda is public participation for anything you'd like to bring forth before the council. If you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes.
Louis Seamer, one sixteen Eastern Circle. I'm here to talk about number sixteen. I'm in agreement with Mr. Martin and Mr. Burrell. A contract that says not to exceed should be honored as such. I suggest we not take a bid from this company into the future, into infinity. Um, that's not the way to do business. And, uh, I think we ought to let them know that, that they will not have another opportunity to bid. Surely, there must be somebody else that can deliver a service. They lowballed us, and then they gigged us. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. Um, I just wanted to come and issue an apology to you guys of sorts. Uh, I believe I let my frustrations get a little bit the best of me a couple of weeks ago and failed, I guess I name-called you guys and failed to recognize a lot of the, uh, the work that you put into the city. Um, from serving in similar situations, I, I can, I, I have an idea of the emails that you answer and the meetings that you participate in and that sort of thing. So, uh, that was pretty, you know, that, that wasn't right of me to not recognize that. Um, now, with that being said, I, I still do not understand, uh, the, the way that you guys have handled the, the book situation in particular. Um, I personally believe that this is something that if, i- i- if you just kinda put it up for a vote to start with, um, I don't believe that it would have festered the way that it has, uh, over the last two years, to the point that, you know, we've got the New York Times now, you know, writing articles about this. Um, you know, e- every other library in the state has, um, you know, has gone along with the APLS. Um, I, you know, and now it's come to the point where, where, you know, Fairhope is losing forty-two thousand dollars a year. Um, I, I, I don't understand that. Um, I, and, and at this point, I, I just believe that it's a no-brainer, um, to go ahead and, and basically issue a resolution, um, to, you know, to make your, your library board basically follow the APLS. I, I mean, and then you get your forty-two thousand dollars. Um, so, that's, that's, you know, and I'm not sure if y'all saw what Spanish Fort just did, um, this past week. They, they went ahead and issued a, um, a resolution just basically, uh, you know, making sure that sexually explicit, uh, material was moved from the, uh, you know, the children's section into the, into the adult section. And, you know, to me, it just, i- it just seems like common sense. And when my, when my, uh, buddy Zach Miller, uh, discovered this stuff and he brought it to, to me, I mean, it, it was just obvious that it was sexually explicit in nature. And I, I just, you know, I, I, I don't agree with the way you guys have handled this. Uh, but at the same time, you know, I, I probably didn't handle, uh, my, my frustration in the right way. So, that's, you know, the main reason that I'm coming back. Um, but I still believe that, uh, and my group believes that, uh, this issue, uh, if you would just put it up for a resolution, um, and go along with the APLS, A- APLS and John Wall, uh, that it would, it would help a lot of the, it would help to, I guess, uh, diffuse this entire situation. And also, uh, if y'all had anything y'all wanted to, you know, talk to me about, I, I was gonna stay here and, and answer questions and just kinda talk to you guys. But.
Appreciate it.
'Cause I, I, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I just kinda said what I, what I wanted to say and then left and didn't come back. And I, I saw Mr. Boone kind of make a comment about that later on. I had to go. But, uh, that's, that's kinda what I wanted to say. And, um, you know, I have presented resolutions, uh, to you guys. Uh, you know, our group is willing to help in any way possible. Um, so, you know, that's just kind of, y'all can do what you wanna do. But, uh, you know, that, that's our two cents, that we believe that, uh, you know, it should be put for a resolution and everybody should know kinda where, where you stand. All right. Thank you.
Would you mind stating your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. Uh, Brian Dassinger, uh, representative of Faith Family Freedom Coalition of Baldwin County and the, uh, Baldwin County Conservative Coalition. All right. Y'all have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I don't think so.
Oh, we do?
You better not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's taking notes. He wasn't looking. That's okay. I got you.
I didn't see. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Jean Uruguayo, um, Fairhope resident for over twenty-something years, Rock Creek. And the previous gentleman, what he did just say, which really struck me, is his group. That's exactly what it is. It's his group. It's not the city. It's not the majority of the city or anything. I fully support the education, the knowledge, the hard work that the library board does. They are not trying to pull anything. They are putting books where they feel they should be. I don't think the library, I've been there. I, I went to the library before it was even moved to the previous, when it's attached to this building. I don't believe that people are dropping their kids off as daycare. If they are, they shouldn't be. They should be parenting them. If you're with your child, you see what they're looking at. You know what they're looking at. Just like I'm sure all the parents pay attention to the laptops, the computers, the emails, the what's going on with their friends talking in your living room. And just because they think something should not be heard, should not be read, should not be seen by one child, doesn't mean another parent doesn't think that that is educational, that that is knowledge their child needs for whatever reason, that that is something that they want their child to see. I despise smoking, but I'm not telling every retail place around here to hide cigarettes and vamping and everything, to make it difficult for the people who do want it. You just, the library board, I trust them. And I just don't think that the APLS board is hearing what we say. In fact, at the last meeting, I read, don't know if it's true, but I read that our representative, District One, wasn't even, there's, must have been a misunderstanding, wasn't even present. I wrote a letter to him. I wanted it read at the meeting. He wasn't even present. There was a misunderstanding of the timing or something. He wasn't told when it was, is what I read. Thank you.
Ethan. I'm Joanne Brown, sixty-fourth South Ingleside Street. Over a year ago, I went to the city for a petition to take up the speed bump on our street, so the ambulance and fire trucks can continue to come down the streets. They don't come down them anymore because of the speed bump. And that is slowing them up to getting to people. It's a straight shot to Fairhope Avenue or to Gafer, to go left or right. I had my brother-in-law fall a couple of weeks ago, split his head open. He lives over on Gafer. We put a compressor on, waiting for the ambulance to get there. He could've died waiting, just because of the length that they have to go around now to get to somebody. And they said, yes, they would take it up when I went. It came to the city, and you, Mr. Burrell, put it on hold, and nothing has been done since. Why?
I can't remember what the recommendation was from the Streets Committee, but they make recommendations on that.
And they said yes.
I don't, that's, that, I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, I think it was at the Traffic Committee, and then maybe it came here to pull it up. And then the people who originally wrote the petition for the speed bump maybe came back. Maybe it was gonna be evaluated again. I'd have to go back and look at the Traffic Committee minutes and look at that. But I think there was some discrepancy in people who wanted it and people who didn't want it.
Because it hadn't slowed the traffic up a little bit, but not much.
I promise you, we were trying to go by the Traffic Committee's recommendations, and I, that, that had not changed.
Well, they said yes to us. And, but I mean, that's a direct, and why you would keep it from getting to somebody to take care of them and get them to where they need to go with the fire out.
They're not trying to keep it from anything other than we, we would just want them to review that.
Going around and about.
It was, I also wanna say, this may have been the one where, uh, the very people that signed the posi- petitions said that for them, now said they didn't want them. But then a lot of other residents said, well, wait a minute. I signed the petition. I still wanted them. There was a very small group of people that said they wanted them up. And I think we may have said, well, can you get a petition that says you, you don't want them? And I don't think we've seen that.
I'll have to go back in four minutes, but I think there was some discrepancy between the two groups. The one that you wanted and the one you wanted.
That's right.
Okay.
That, that, that's what happened. Well, yeah, and I mean, you know, it helps if you have a, 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 a petition or at least have something from all those people that signed it. 'Cause, I mean, it was a long petition, and everybody that signed it, we couldn't just, I know that you have a thought about that, and I respect that, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, we did get a petition. It was given to y'all.
To remove them?
Yes. Yes.
We'll look at that then. Okay. I hear you. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Hi.
Been patient. You sat through the whole work session, didn't you?
Yes, I did. I'm, I'm Don Manuel, fifteen Longleaf Circle in Fairhope. So, y- you know, just like Brian, I don't know Brian, but I caught his name. He talked about getting bad press. And, and I, I just happened to write down a few things, like the New York Times, utopia dreamers finding this Alabama city now fighting, uh, because of books, they're dividing it. That's New York Times. Fox News, uh, Alab- Alabama City bemoans rogue library in woke city council over sexually explicit books on library shelves. That's the press that Fairhope's getting right now. I really think we need to nip this in the bud. Uh, you know, I'm reading the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, minutes from the meeting, and this, this, this came up. Uh, Councilman Martin, I think you, you'd say at the following, you said that we would follow Alabama law. Well, I, I don't, is the, is the APLS guidelines Alabama law? Uh, I, I, I guess there's some, I don't know.
I do wanna address that question some. I wanna address that, if I may, and I'm gonna give you your time back.
Yeah, sure.
So, he has said we're gonna follow the law. Jay has said it. I've said it every, to every person that would listen, that we're gonna follow it. The simple fact, though, that somebody challenges a book doesn't mean it has to be removed. They're going through a long process, so they can say to the person that challenged it, we believe we are following the law. We believe it, it deserves to be where it is. Now, the other thing that goes on a lot with all this media, because this is just clickbait. They interchange childrens and teens, and they sensationalize by saying that this is in the children's section and it shouldn't be, when it's really in the teen section. And the content changes a lot, you know, between a children's book and a teen book. And we, you know, the, also the APLS said that they were going to have an appeals process, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, we haven't seen that yet. So, when, when somebody challenges a book and our library board says, no, we're not going to move it. And by the way, that, there's a lot of people saying we're not moved anyways. That's not true at all. We've ru- we, we've moved numerous books. So, to say that it's not working, numerous books have been moved.
Well, is it?
And, and so if they disagree, the APLS is supposed to have a process by which you can appeal their decision. And I think that's still, if, correct me if I'm wrong, they haven't even come up with that yet.
In a conversation, we, in a conversation with Mr. Wall, he suggested that they may have an appeals committee formed of three people, but it still has to get through their board in order to form that committee. Um, I did, I did talk to him several weeks ago and ask him if that had been done. He said, no, but it had to go to the board for consideration, and they would have to form the committee.
So, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, because, did you watch the meeting last Thursday in, in Montgomery?
I did not. No, sure.
Okay. I, I did. I, I watched it. And, you know, nothing really came out during the meeting. Both sides were there. Matter of fact, most of the people that were here, on the other side, were there. But it's my understanding that after the discussions they had, that they denied continuing the funding. So, I know they put it on hold, uh, but now it's my understanding after that meeting, they made a decision because the guidelines weren't followed, that they decided, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to withhold funding. So, I, I would think if we're in compliance here, and they would've continued, they would've brought the funding back. But I, I don't think that's the case.
I think, based on the article I read about it, it sounds like he wants to see how the rest of the review process goes. There's been six or seven books have been moved. Two have been kept in the teen section, and there's maybe another dozen that are in the review process. Now, the two books that have been kept in the teen section are in the teen section of libraries all over the state of Alabama currently. And the only difference is, they haven't had a group going up and trying to petition to have their funding paused. So, they're not, it's not that Fairhope's really that much of an outlier. And, and if you go to the library, I mean, my opinion, you've, you've got volunteers, you've got professionally trained librarians, and, and they're trying to work through the process that was initially told to them that, hey, you're in compliance with the APLS. But then, I guess it didn't like the way some of the, the, the process of the book review or how long it's taken. So, um, I, I really think that there can be a positive resolution. It's just, I think John Wall or Chairman Wall is wanting to wait to reinstate funding to see, um, how the review process goes. process goes with the rest of the books.
So let me say this, I, I'm not sure, you know, how to, how to get this behind us, but we need to get it behind us. We're, we really are getting bad press, whether it's the clickbait or not, it's, we're getting bad press. Look, I, I myself will be more than happy as a, as, to sit on a board. I know you'll have, I know I'm more conservative, I'm very conservative, and I know, just like the lady behind me, she's, she's less conservative than I am. We set up a board with parents, I've, mine are grandkids, all mine grew up here and already graduated and working in, in the area. But I'll be more than happy to sit on that, and I think it's going to take that, because right now, the, the comment in the New York Times, I think is accurate, is dividing the city. You saw that, last week was, we were here three hours just listening to people, and I, I think something's going to have to be done. And I'm more than happy to sit on a, sit on a non-bias panel with each side and come up with a, a resolution that everybody can, can meet, because I think from here, it's not going to work.
Let me ask you, may I ask you, and you can, you can just tell me, it's none of my business, but have you read any of those books?
I have not.
Okay.
But I have, I have seen excerpts of them. So I didn't go through the book page by page, but I have seen what's in there, and it is very appalling.
Well, the one, if I may, Councilman Conyers, you spoke at the last meeting about one particular, may I, may I bring that up?
Sure.
So, someone who I trust very well, who by the way, is a conservative, and what, despite what the people that want the books moved are saying, they're trying to paint us as ultra-liberal and all that, everybody on this dais is a conservative, every one of us are. But we probably have a little bit more knowledge about what's going on than a lot of the people that are, that are speaking. Councilman Conyers took one of the books, and it was the one when they paused the funding, which got me so upset, because I was upset that somebody could just go to Montgomery, raise an objection, and pause our funding without them at least calling and saying, hey, what's going on there? Not even a question, that, that was what got me. I'm not trying to change their opinion or their mind.
I've heard you say that before.
I'm not, I'm not trying to change their mind, and I respect your opinion.
Yeah.
And that's, and there is a divide, but I think it's just, there is just, there's a difference of opinion of what somebody thinks acceptable to their teenager, and what some people believe is not acceptable to their teenager. So this man on my right, who I trust a lot, I've known Jimmy since way before either one of us even thought about being on the city council. And, I mean, he was fresh out of college when I met him, and he read the book sold, cover to cover. Said, Jimmy, what'd you think? And he stated this, and he said, not only do I believe it belongs in the library, I believe it shelved in the right spot. That's the book that the lady held up when they paused the funding. And I'm sorry...
It's got some tough subject matter.
It's tough, no, he's not saying it's, it's an easy read, and he's not even saying it doesn't have tough subject matter, but he believed that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, from an educational standpoint, that had value. Even Chairman Wall stated that book has literary value, and that's part of the litmus test. If the chairman of APLS is saying that it had literary value, but they voted to pause the funding, I have to say, I don't, I don't know. I haven't read the book myself, but this is someone who has read it. We've been accused of not looking at the books and not reading them, that was one example from somebody that I trust and I serve with, who I know to be a conservative person. Just one example.
Yeah, well, I, I guess...
We, we could take the easy way and re-shelve everything that they ask for, but there are people on that library board that feel like somebody's going to miss something that they may should have read if that happens.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't know, look, this has been going on for a long time.
I understand.
And, as a citizen, we've got to get it behind us.
I understand.
Let me say, I completely agree with the point that it's something that we clearly need to move beyond. I mean, we've been, as a city, we've been dealing with it for two and a half years, and I think part of the problem is, is the issue has been oversimplified to two books, which I think is not true. I think the process was questioned, I think the process has been, has been looked at, I think it's still being looked at, to make sure we're doing things the way we should be doing. But also, and this is something I brought up in our last meeting, is I, I don't believe our library is, is intending to be openly defiant, which I, which I think is what appears to be the message.
It, it does, yes.
It does a little like that, we, we know that.
But that is, but that is not, they have worked through, they have changed the policies to adopt the APLS standards, and they, they had some issues with the review process, or I think the denial of, of re-reviewing certain books, which has now been changed, and that's what, what the process is continuing to look at, is now looking back at those books to see if something's going to be moved and if, if it's not.
Well, who's, who's going to make this decision?
The, the board is, the board is now back in reviewing those books, and they are working...
This board or the library?
Yeah, I said, and this is part of the problem too, is a resolution from the city council of where a library book goes has no impact, because we've never made that decision, we still don't make it, it's never been this group's prerogative. And so when we make comments in here about how we personally feel about where a book should be, that's all it is, it's a personal feeling. It has no governmental impact.
And I guess the funding.
Yeah, I mean, so, so basically, the only method at which we can do anything up here is to say, if you don't do this, we're going to shut the library down. And ultimately, I haven't, I don't feel like that's an appropriate message, and I don't feel like that's an appropriate reaction, especially when you're talking about a handful of books.
All right, well, one more thing. So I guess it's a little confusing for me too, when I hear that within Baldwin County, there's other libraries that were in the same situation as Fairhope, but then they complied. So I don't know if I'm getting the wrong, hearing the wrong thing or not, but Fairhope, as I understand it, is the only one that hasn't. Maybe, maybe you're right that the other, no one's complained, I don't know.
Well, and I'm talking about the statewide, and so I don't know about specifically Baldwin County, and I, I think Fairhope, what I think really set it off is they had some books that they reviewed and said, the staff said, we're not going to relocate them. Then the APLS changed the policies, and they brought them back, and initially, the library said, we have a, our policy says, once the book's been reviewed, it stays for five years. Then they decided, okay, we, we understand we're getting the negative feedback, so we're going to amend that policy and say, we're going to take these books that were reviewed before the APLS adopted new policies, and we're going to run them through the review process. And so they've started doing that, they've moved six, they've kept two, and they've got like a dozen more to review.
Well, I then, I'm, I'm going to leave you with this, I, I think you, you're going to have to be really clear to the citizens, because this is, this is like a domino.
Like a what?
A domino effect, it is, it's getting louder and louder and louder and louder.
I think the other thing that needs to be clarified is how the library is, was formed in the seventies. It, it's different than other cities like Spanish Fort they're referencing. Well, the Spanish Fort City Council is the library board. That's not how it govern, that's not how it's governed in Fairhope. In nineteen seventy, when the library board was formed, it gave all that responsibility to the library board and the library staff. Like me as the mayor, I don't direct any of that staff, I don't have anything to do with the operations of the library. So that's the difference in, in how it's governed here.
But it, it, the perception is coming back to the board, to the, to the city.
Right.
That's, that's what the problem is, but I guess...
But respectfully, for, for, for every person that feels like that we need to put this behind us, there is another person equally as enthusiastic about standing behind the library board and, and their decisions, and that's why, you know, you can put it behind you, but you, you mainly do that by trying to appease one side of it.
Yeah, but I don't think you're going to be able to appease one side, it's impossible.
I don't think you are either.
You're not. So I think there's going to have to be a, a, I guess, I guess the path is, we're going to listen to...
I guess we try to let the process work and just see what happens with this.
I, I think that's going to mistake, because that's never going to work out. There's going to have to be a directive that say, this is what we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do it. And you're not going to, you're going to make one side unhappy.
That's right. Well, it's never going to, if it doesn't work out, then what do you do? You're going to make one side angry, and you, you never come to a resolution, that just means that, that one side's not going to respect the other side's opinion on that.
However, to let it fester is far worse.
But, but let me just say this, I think if there is a process, and, and that's what I heard from Montgomery last week, is there is still an ongoing process, and I think for us to make some giant move without that process having played off...
No, 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 I think you have to wait for that, you have to wait for that, I didn't realize that.
But I will say, I mean, from my perspective, and, and again, this is my personal feeling on the matter, I mean, I don't feel like our library has been intentionally defiant. However, if we get through this process, and, and they are, if they reject that in result, then I will have an issue with that.
That's right, and that's something that we've all said, is that we will follow the, we will follow the law, because it is a law, we, we have to follow the law, we've always said that. It's just that there, there is a process, and they haven't been through all of it, and that process is potentially being amended, but ultimately, and I've said this in every interview I've made, is that we will follow the law. So we're not going to be defying the law.
But I think you're right, though, the problem is the perception that, that we have the option to wave a magic wand and end it, when that's never been the case. And quite honestly, the very first meeting we had about this issue was two and a half years ago, and after two, two and a half hours, someone stood up, I was, happened to be council president at the time, and said, we're all waiting to know what you're going to do about it, and I said, I'm, I'm, I'm very sorry, but this council has no authority over where the books in the library go, never have, not, not since nineteen sixty-nine, I think, and that's unfortunately where we are.
Well, thank you for your time.
Here, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is anyone else? Alan said no. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thanks.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Did, did Booney vote no on the adjournment? All right, with, motion carries.